All right. Good evening, everyone. Calling the October 15th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. I will be filling in for Chuck Sheen, who is filling under the weather this evening as Chairperson. Also, since Chuck is out this evening, I will be seating Bennett Brissette for this meeting on the commission. We will also have the regular members Lynn Conway, Gary Belkey, Alyssa Morrison, and myself. So with that, one other quick item I think I should note before we begin in case there were some people here for a couple of different hearings that were on the schedule. So I will just go through quickly to let folks know. Under Old Business, the PZ 2428 CAM, Gary and Christie Chadwell, they have requested that that be postponed to November 4th. Also, for public hearings, for the first public hearing for PZ 2424 SUP for G Development, we will be opening but then immediately continuing that as the applicant will not be attending. Then for the next one, for PZ 2427 SUP Pinewood Landscaping, we will also be postponing that meeting to November 19th, and we will be proceeding with the AG Trust meeting. So if you are here for any of those meetings that are going to be postponed, you may leave. There's no reason to be here for those tonight. With that said, next item then will be minutes. So the first item is for the minutes for meeting number 1769, September 25th, 2024. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes, number 1769.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll abstain, I was not attending that meeting on September 25th. Motion carries. Next item, minutes for meeting number 1770, for October 1st, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes, number 1770.
Okay, thank you. Meeting, motion made, any second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes?
All things on the minute.
Okay, thank you, Bennett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to make a public comment at this time? You may step forward and do so. Going once, going twice, okay. We'll proceed. Next item, correspondence. No correspondence? Okay, thank you, Clifton. Next item, reports, staff report. Clifton.
First item is to review and approve the 2025 calendar. That should be in your packet. Just need a simple vote on that, then we can get that to the court.
Got that here? So I don't see any issues with the 2025 calendar. Do you need a copy? Okay, is there a motion on the minutes? Or pardon me, on the calendar?
Yep, Mr. Motioner. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the calendar as submitted.
Thank you. Any second on the motion?
Seconded.
Thank you. All right, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any extension? All right, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, next item here, I think also, Clifton, we're going to get an update on the RFR?
The RFP?
RFP, sorry.
Yeah. So after the last meeting, I shared the commission's request with the First Select Woman to add a second member from the P and Z onto that selection committee. She initially said yes, that she's okay with doing so. I have, I'm going to meet with her and Chuck in the next couple of days and have an update from there.
Okay.
But yeah, tentatively, she said yes, she's okay with having two PCC members on that selection committee.
Good, great.
Did she say, how many people altogether did she say? Was it five?
Five, five is the limit in the procurement policy, so.
Okay. Thank you. Clifton, any other questions for Clifton on that? Okay, thank you. Next item then, any updates from any members of the commission on any items? Okay, none, we'll move on then. Zoning enforcement and violations. Flipped over the report, anything to call out on the report, Clifton? For today? Okay, any questions from the commission on the report?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll move on. Next item, administrative review. First item for administrative review is 24-2070N, Town of Stonington. This is an administrative review for the clearing and stump removal for the circus lot site preparation. Property is located at 29 Noise Avenue, Pocketuck, pardon me, M/B/L 1-3-1. Property is located in the PV-5 zone. Is there anybody here to speak on that? They're welcome.
Want to come up?
Yep.
Good evening. I'm curious, Deputy Public Works Director for the town.
Good evening.
I think it's a pretty simple request for administrative review. 29 Noise Avenue is a proposed area for the circus lot to be developed eventually into somewhat of a park, maybe with a possible athletic field. But currently, we have some grant money in place, and we'd like to exhaust the first part of that grant money. It's privately funded grant, and we'd like to remove some of the invasive species and stay within the, outside the upper review area. Probably be like an acre to an acre and a half of land that's in there now, with some trees needed to be removed, some stumping. And then also, at the end of Noise Avenue, right now, it's, I don't know if anyone's familiar, but it's similar to a cul-de-sac setup in there. We'd like to put a tracking pad, a ground tracking pad, parking pad, so that as we enter and remove stuff from the site, I think it's brought out onto the road, and we can get the equipment that we need to. We have a contractor lined up, we have approval for that, board of finance to utilize that contractor, they're on state contract, so we're kind of all set to go. We just need your approval.
How much time lasts between finishing this, this stumping, to the actual finishing of the circuit lot improvement question?
I think it'll be considerable time, because we have to do, spend this portion, do this part, show that we're making progress, and then we can actually have some formalized plans drawn up of it. Right now, we just have a conceptual plan. I don't know if anyone's seen that. It's been in front of the First Select Woman's office for numerous months. So we have that, but we need to do the clearing, we need to do it in steps, so that we continue to get the rest of the grant money. So our grants writer, I don't have a timeline for it. Our grants administrator, grants writer Molly, that might have a better line on that. But I would say it'd be considerable, because we're thinking, we'll get this done, show the progress we're making, and then she'll get the funding from the rest of the grant as they move forward, but.
I was just thinking to myself, you know, what would be the state of that area if it's another year and you've got it all, you know, torn up, et cetera?
Great question. We thought of the same thing.
Would you seed it in between?
Yeah, well, we're going to try to make it so that it's a mowable area, you know, we'll get something to grow there, but not, right now, it's got a lot of the knotweed growing in there, so it's very invasive. So we're going to try to remove what we can of the roots of that, take that out, and then get something that's growing in there, even if it's a typical ryegrass or herb blend or something like that. And then we hopefully can keep it at bay by just doing a regular mow, put out our mowing list, and the guys will go down there with it, just hopefully like a lawn, no, make it lawn type.
Make it nice, okay?
Not a golf course, but at least mowable.
Okay, thank you.
Those are my questions, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, do I hear a motion almost?
Well, do we stipulate that it be reseeded, or are you just going to seed it?
I think that's part of your normal practice.
Yeah, it's part of our practice. I just want to make sure you're going to.
Fine, if you'd like to, but yeah.
No, I know you're going to, right, but I'm just having it in writing, it's just better, but it's fine.
Okay, is there a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, did I say the number in until?
Just the application for the town in Stonington.
To approve application number 24-270N, Town of Stonington.
Okay, I think it's 2070N, okay. Motion made to approve, is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any against? Any extensions? Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda, administrative review is 24-2090N, Seacoast Mushrooms, Earth Light Tech. This is for an administrative review for the installation of a ground-mounted solar array property located at 146 Tocqueback Road, Stonington, M/B/L 852-2-1. Property is located in the LI 130 zone. Anybody here for this application, Seacoast Mushrooms? Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, how are you?
Good. Could you state your name just for the record?
Jim Baman, project manager for Earth Light Technologies.
Proceed.
Yeah, I believe we're under review for our ground mount solar, actually, part of the solar is going to be, going to be partial ground mount on the property, as well as about a third of it is going to be on the roof of the building, which is existing.
Okay. Is there going to be any additional clearing that you're going to need to do to put these ones on the ground?
No.
No.
Okay, sorry, if you're going to speak, that's okay. If you're going to, you need to come up and ask, but he said no, so, okay. All right. Go ahead.
Are you going to be able to see it from the street? I'm not familiar, do you have a diagram or anything?
No. Actually, we have a board and we also have handouts.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, let's do that, thank you.
It's also in the packet.
Oh, yes.
But to answer your question, we're probably, we're over 400 feet from the adjacent roadway.
Okay.
So it's not going to be, they're not going to be visible.
Last two pages, here, here, to show better than the other page.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, because I think it's.
Oh, that's perfect.
Yep. Thank you very much, appreciate it. This way, right up. You all set?
Yep.
Okay. On the last page, you'll see that we've got all the dimensions pretty much from the property lines, as well as the adjacent roadway.
These pictures, I assume, were of similar construction?
Correct, yes. Yeah, we're going to be utilizing ground screws for the installation of the ground mount, which is absolutely minimal disturbance. We're also going to be utilizing soil and erosion containment during construction. Everything is a preventative, there's going to be very little, if any, when the ground screws go into the ground, there's virtually no soil displacement.
Just curious, what will this generate electricity wise? What?
It's actually on gauge two.
Gauge two? Thank you. Any other questions from the commission for this? The applicant?
So I'm just, I'm looking on this page. And that's going to be the big rectangle?
It's going to be the ground mount, correct.
Is, so it's 400 feet, but are all the trees going to be taken down? Is there going to be a border around it? How's that going to work?
No, there, I mean, there's vegetation and growth between where the array is and the roadway.
How much? 400 feet or?
Pretty close to it, yeah. It's, it's pretty raw vegetation in that whole area.
Okay, so you're not going to be able to see anything?
Yeah.
And then do you plan on bordering the array or putting a fence around it? What do you?
Not this time, there's no plan right now to do, to do any fencing, it's on private property.
Uh huh.
So it's often, you know, an access driveway to the property.
I know in the past, whenever we had large ground arrays, we, there's been borders around them, whether it's been planted or fenced.
Does it sound, to me, there is a border at least, would there be a tree border around?
Yeah, absolutely.
All the way around it?
Yes.
Oh, there will be a tree.
Well, not, I mean, but.
Existing trees.
Existing, yeah, it abuts the driveway that comes into the property.
Okay.
But one of the sides in the back is all vegetation, trees and growth.
Mm-hmm, okay. So would you, would you be open to stipulating that that border would be kept around the array?
No.
No, so.
Oh, sorry, if you're going to, if you could please.
I'm going to go over the property. Okay. And against the, the race, I'm not open to maintaining all those trees around the array, no.
Okay, so this could be an array that is just, you know, you're going to remove the vegetation from around the array. Whether you remove it or burns, or I don't know, falls down in a storm, you don't plan on maintaining it at all?
I don't plan on maintaining the current vegetation around the array at all, no, it's all entirely invasive species, killing all the trees all around it. It's going to fall, it's going to kill everything all around it already anyway, it's all, the Wetlands Biology Report that we presented to the Wetlands Commission shows it's all invasive species all around it. So it could all come down at any time, and I don't plan to put trees in to maintain it around it, no.
So how much are you going to clear?
We're not going to clear any.
But you're not going to keep the trees?
Well, they're going to, they're going to be taken down by the invasive species that have been killing them all, all over the property already anyway.
So I think what I'm hearing is that, first off, you went through the Wetlands committee?
We did, because there's a portion of the array, the ground mount array, that's within the 100-foot upper review area.
Uh huh.
It's on the application we put before the commission, that we did get approval from the, actually, unanimous, unanimous approval from the Wetlands Commission.
You're very close to the Wetlands.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they had no issues with it. I would have, but.
If I'm understanding this correctly, in the current state, there's a 400-foot vegetation, natural vegetation buffer between the array and the access driveway. And then there's vegetation, many, many.
Yeah, no. The 400 foot is a measurement between the array and.
Tocqueback Road.
Tocqueback Road.
Oh.
It's like 10 foot between the array and the driveway, or something, whatever.
But that's a private driveway. It's a private driveway, yes, sure.
Okay, and eventually, all those things are going to die. You've gotten expert advice on that, and you have no intention of replanting or anything, so this will be visible from the road.
It could be, yes.
So would you be open to saying that we want some kind of a vegetative buffer from the road?
No. Unless it's required by a requirement within the town.
This is a permitted use by rate. This only comes before the commission as a courtesy, under 15.3.2P. But this is very straightforward, as far as we're concerned. Plus 400 feet is quite a distance.
Okay, well, that's the end of my questions, so.
Anyone else missing any questions for the applicant?
I'm sure that Wetlands approved it, but for sure of that, no.
All right, with no other questions, what's the commission's flag on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application number 242090N, Seacoast Mushrooms.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. There's a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, no discussion. All those in favor of approving this application?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Against.
Okay, all against? Any extension? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There it is. All right, next item, under Old Business, this is for PZ 2423 SPA and CAM, Ocean Community YMCA, Sarah Britner. This is a site plan application and coastal area management review for the construction of an accessory structure and reconfiguration of an existing drop-off route. Property is located at 1 Harry Austin Drive Mystic, M/B/L 160-6-14. Property is located in the RC 120 zone. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, happy Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
For the record, my name is John Casey, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole, happy to be here tonight representing the Ocean Community. As you said, tonight, we're just looking for site plan, coastal site plan approval to allow the construction of a new state-of-the-art, code-compliant accessory camp building, replacing an out-of-date accessory building. With me tonight is our team, let's see, we have Maureen Fitzgerald, who's the president and chief executive officer of Ocean Community YMCA, Sheila Liddy, who's the chief operations officer of the Y, Sergio Terenzia, president of Terenzia Associates, Sarah Britner, the project engineer from Terenzia, and Doug Anino, the principal from Anino Incorporated, the project architect. So you will hear from Sarah, Doug, and Maureen shortly.
Okay.
Just quickly, we're at, this is the YMCA, we're at 1 Harry Austin Drive, we're in the RC 120 zone. The entire property is 20.48 acres. It's the old Mystic Community Center, which became part of the YMCA in 2003, and many of you are probably familiar with the major renovation that culminated in 2019. For this project, we, from a land use perspective, I'll, Maureen, talk a little bit more about the, the use, we're replacing that building, which, if any of you use the Y, you will notice when you drive in, it's next to the old baseball field, which also will be going, the field, the baseball parts of the field will be going away. But we obtained a variance from the zoning board back in July to reduce the, the front yard setback from 75 feet to 24 feet. The building actually, that's there now, is at 12.7 feet, so we're actually moving it back, we're improving it, and that was the basis for our variance that's been granted and recorded. So I think what we want to do tonight is just sort of take you through the project, what it's used for, and what it's, and the reason we're moving forward with it, then we'll turn to, and that'll be Maureen, then we'll turn to Sarah to go over the site plan, and Doug to go over the architecture, and then I'll just finish up, if there's any loose ends I feel, I'll wrap things up. And we are a site plan, it's not a special, it's not a public hearing, so we'll try to be good, and please just stop us along the way, I guess, and ask any questions, so we can be responsive. So with that, I'll turn it over to Maureen.
Good evening, thank you for hearing our case tonight. We currently have between 200 and 250 children going to our day camp for 11 weeks out of the year in the summer. The majority of those children come from the Stonington area. With the YMCA, no one's denied access for their inability to pay, so we have about 25% of those children on some financial assistance in order for them to come to camp. Currently, we have, I would call, characterized as an old garage, that has a camp office, a nurses' station, bathrooms, and some storage. It's in very bad shape, if you've been on site, you know, we have a beautiful building that we renovated six years ago, that you were very supportive of, and doing very well. This is kind of the last phase of that, and it's the outside to tie in a new building, but also to have indoor space for rainy days, for the day camp, bathrooms, state-of-the-art, a nurses' office, and a camp director's office, and some storage. We won't be expanding the camp, we just needed to help accommodate the children that are currently there and the staff. We also employ probably about 80 staff throughout the summer at this day camp, and again, primarily they're from the Stonington area, a lot of college students, high school students as well. So the need is there, and we hope we can move through the process, and you're supportive, but we're here to answer any questions that you may have. And the offseason, we're going to be using it, we have a rolling club currently, and we will be doing some family activities, teen activities, we have a low ropes course on our ball field, and we'll incorporate that into the, this pavilion. So thank you.
My hearing in Westerly, actually, I finished early, so I was able to come tonight. Sarah is here, if you want to hear from her, but I was going to get the presentation, and I may have to ask her a few questions along the way, but she did a great job with this plan. For the record, Sergio Terenzia with Terenzia and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street, Pocketuck, we developed this plan in our office, I stamped it as a licensed engineer, and I am licensed in the state of Connecticut. John and Maureen characterized the project very well, there's an existing tired building there, not very attractive, and we are going to be replacing it with something very nice, which Doug is going to go through with some of his more intricate of the design features. The building is going to be replaced about in the same footprint, as John mentioned, it's a bit further back. It's tough to see on this diagram, but there's, it's long, the building right now is long ways, facing Harry Austin, and this one is going to be much more broad as you, as you approach, it's going to be a focal point for when you come into the site. There's a patio area in the front, where there is an area where you can do pickup and drop off, a patio in the back, also more programming space, and the, the main drop-off, though, actually be by the pavilion, which is much further down, down towards beyond the parking lot off of this map. So the, the traffic patterns will still remain the same. We did an exhaustive, reviewing alternatives of making sure the traffic patterns, because we want to make sure that the YMCA patrons that aren't dropping or picking up children at camp can still get to the parking lot and, and get in and out of the YMCA seamlessly without, you know, danger of pedestrian safety. We've kind of phased the project in such a way where we're, because of budgetary concerns and wanting to make sure we obviously get the, the project to move forward, that we will still maintain the same traffic patterns, but there's another phase to have a cut-through that will bring the traffic around, and mostly for those that are picking up and dropping off children for the camp. We have accommodated the stormwater with a rain garden, biore, a little bioretention infiltration basin in the rear, which is going to tie into an existing swale that runs along the side of the building, and this is a new feature that the, that will, will improve the stormwater management for the site. I think Maureen and John had mentioned that as part of this project, we're also taking down the press box, some other ancillary buildings, the dugouts, the fence, so that this, the ball field is no longer going to act solely as a ball field, it will be more of a multi-purpose field that can be used for other things, and it was mainly, it's, it was set up just for baseball, softball, but it'll be, it'll be able to be utilized for, for different things, and we're actually going to be removing another nonconformity. The press box actually is, is over the property line, so that will be taken out, so, all things to make it more conforming, the building's being pulled further away, which we got the variance for with respect to that 75-foot setback to the, to the Harry Austin, which is also a unique situation, it's a dead-end road, there's actually an easement. There's actually an easement that runs, the stadium was driven over there before, there's a turnaround there, and the town pulled the easement over that for emergency vehicles, and we didn't have any commentary from the police or the fire that, because we're not really, we're not going to be changing any of that, that situation. We did get some comments from the town engineer, and we have addressed those, and I believe as, I know he was off for a couple of weeks, but he was gracious enough to take a look at it right when he got back today, and got us a sign-off, and said he didn't have any concerns with the revised plans that we had sent him before he had left for vacation. So, we appreciate Mr. Greenlaw getting back to us, so we could come and report back tonight that his concerns had been met. I believe we had some comments from the Water Pollution Control Authority, some minor notes that can be added to the plan. This building's going to be served by city sewer and water, so all those utilities will be put back or tied back into the building, because they currently are already there right now. He had some concerns about at the demo of the building to cut and cap with an inspection by someone from WPCA, all things that are pretty standard, and we have no issues with. Doug will go into some more finer points of the design of the building and meeting flood compliance, but as far as the site goes, I believe that's all I have. I don't know if you want to hold questions to the end, or if you have some questions for me, happy to.
Yep, can you question now, at this point, from the commission?
Just a quick one. Is there any, I'm trying to remember the property from ages ago, in fact, last time I was there, but is there any bathrooms or any?
In this building now?
Yeah.
Yes, there is some, I believe there is some bathrooms.
Yes.
Is there showers or two?
No showers, just bathrooms.
Bathrooms, some offices and storage.
Okay, there are current, and there will be later on?
Yeah, yeah, but it definitely needs to be upgraded.
Right, right.
There's no sense in renovating the structure.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, you can proceed.
As Doug's going to set up his board, I just want to clarify something that was in the staff report, that I corresponded with Clifton about, it's just about the flood zone, because I think that's one of the things. It was mentioned in the staff report that the site was in the coastal AE zone, and it didn't mention just the A-zone, the plain vanilla A-zone, but this is actually in the, just in the A-zone. It's not in a coastal. Because the coastal AE zone is where it's the limit of moderate wave action, and so when you look on the flood insurance rate map for Stonington, for this area, that line is back closer to the river. So this area is just in the regular A-zone, which has some meaning when it comes to floodproofing.
Right.
So, so we don't have to comply, we're not in the coastal AE zone, we don't have to comply with those, that level of floodproofing.
Okay, and Clifton?
Yeah, it was just, it was just in, under the environmental elements section, I forgot a comma.
Okay.
But all the other comments from the, from myself, from the building official, from the engineer, and from deep, all mention that this is an AE zone.
Okay.
Regular AE zone.
Okay.
And then with that, I will turn it over to Doug to show you the building and address those comments.
Good evening, everyone. Doug Anino from Anino Incorporated, we're architects in north of Earl, Massachusetts. Don't hold that against me. But we were the original architects for the Mystic YMCA. We had a great, really successful, enjoyable construction, and came up with a great facility, which, as Maureen said, is well-accepted. So as the next stage, we wanted to renovate the one-story concrete block building, but it proved to be very problematic. It's just in total disrepair, foundations are crumbling, walls, everything's crumbling. So, the new scenario was to develop a bow-key, pedestrian-friendly, scaled moderately, so it's an A-frame, basically a barn on the site adjacent to the existing one. And it's one-story, it's 1,500 square feet. It contains, as others have said, toilets on the first floor, which are all gender-friendly and handicapped accessible, so we meet those requirements, which we currently don't meet in the other building. Concrete slab, some loft space upstairs, there's about 750 square feet of loft space upstairs for storage. We hope to use it in three seasons, as Maureen stated, continue after the summer, and hopefully begin early in the spring, but the idea now is not to use it year-round, it won't be conditioned, so we won't really have mechanical systems. Basically, a concrete bunker up to the flood elevation, and I'll go into some of those ideas in a minute, but it's the same sort of textures and colors that we used on the other Y, the original Y, the colors, the clapboard, this is board and batten, conventional architectural shingles on the roof, big barn doors, so the idea was to keep it light and airy, so we could open it up in the summer, kids could check in, kids could gather on inclement days, and staff can sort of keep track of who's coming and going, so we did some bigger windows at the corners. There is some storage, there's a nurses' and nurse slash office, administrative office on the first floor. And basically, the second floor is just open, has a lot of space. There were some comments on floodproofing we don't get. At this point in the game, we don't get too in-depth with construction documents, but I wanted to give you an idea of some of the flood considerations of this building. Yeah. This, this is in the flood zone, so we, luckily, we don't have to contend with wave action, but we have to contend with flood conditions. So, essentially, we build a reinforced concrete wall up five and a half feet, so we're above the base flood elevation by a foot. And then we'll clapboard, and we'll finish the outside, so it's, it doesn't look like a concrete bunker, it doesn't look, you know, too industrial on the outside, you retain that scale. And then, in flood conditions, or when a storm is threatening, there are flood planks, they call them now, that can be installed at the openings, so we're not relying on existing doors or windows to waterproof the structure, we're using those co-compliant planks to set up the flood protection up to the base flood elevation. Concrete slab, as I said, above the five-and-a-half-foot mark, it'll probably be wood frame, and probably a wood, wood truss roof or some sort of roof to allow for some of the storage upstairs. With that, I think I'm done.
Just out of curiosity, on these flood planks, are they manually installed?
Yeah, they have to be manually installed, and they fit, it's pretty simple, they fit in the slot.
Pre-existing slot, I think.
Yeah, yeah, slots in there, they take the planks out, and then, in the wider openings, they have a kicker basically in the back that plugs into the floor.
Would this be something just, that's installed in the off-season, or if a pending storm's coming, or?
Pending storms, or if they close down the Y, they probably install it, just to protect it. The downside is you're relying on staff to set it up.
Right.
It's pretty simple.
So, did you mention that there's going to be patios?
Oh, okay, sorry. Yes, I forgot that whole, whole thing. But what we'd like to do on the outside is create outside shower, so the kids can take a shower after they go into the water, so that'll be for all the kids, it's not separated, male or female, boys or girls. So that, that is a partial screen wall with a roof over it, but open top and bottom, so it's easy to supervise what's going on. And then we'd like to do almost an outside patio with, I hope, some tent-like structures to, again, protect the kids on really hot sunny days or in inclement weather.
Is that on the picture that was behind this, I think?
Yeah, sorry.
Visual, there are only two structures there?
Yes, so, good idea. These are the tent-like structures we'd like to build, and a patio space. This is the outside shower area, which has a small roof on it, but it's open top to bottom.
And how far out does that patio come from the building?
Patio comes out.
Is the tent permanent?
Twenty-seven and a half feet, it comes out from the back. Yes. It probably would, they're paying to have to set up and taped down.
But they're canvas?
It's like that polyester. I wish it was canvas, but they don't. It's like a polyester, sort of.
Thing, yeah. Material. Material versus hard, okay.
Just out of curiosity, could they be taken down if a storm was coming?
Yes.
The patio itself, what, what is that, concrete?
Concrete, probably be colored concrete with the saw cut lines on it to give it some texture.
And what's there now, what is that replacing, the concrete, grass or concrete or?
Asphalt.
Yeah, it's mostly asphalt, color, beautiful asphalt here.
So this, this, the tent part faces?
The water.
Current parking lot? No.
It faces, so, Sergio's plan, the tent structure here, so it's facing the water, parking lot's here, and the Y's over here. So this faces the water here.
So the tents are in the back of the building?
Yeah. This is, Harry Austin's coming down this way.
Yep, yep, okay, gotcha, thank you. That last part did it for me.
Any other questions from the commission?
So, then, just, just to understand the use of the property, so it's a 1,500-square-foot building, 700 feet of it is loft space, above, right?
Above.
So if it's 1,500 on the first floor, then 750 on the second floor.
Okay, all right. And you're going to have offices there, a nurses' station?
Just one office, which is a combination of camp director and a nurse.
There's a floor plan.
Okay, and then you're going to, the children, which you have about, how many children are there?
About 220.
A session?
Yes.
Are going to all go into that building?
No, not simultaneously.
If it rains?
If it rains, some will go in there, some go in the building. We have other tents throughout the grounds as well, depending if it's high winds and downpour, they all go inside to the building.
Or lightning.
Or lightning, correct.
Okay. And there'll be no signs on this building?
We would love to.
We would like one, yeah. We would like Y.
And where would that sign face?
Where would that sign?
It's in our way of face Harry Austin. Harry Austin.
Not the water, like the huge sign you have on the building currently?
No.
No.
Not the water, no.
No. And there are no additional outside lighting on the building?
No.
Is it only going to be used during the day?
There's some gooseneck fixtures over the doorway, and gooseneck fixtures over the Y sign, and there'll be some lights probably in the rafters of that outside shower area.
It would be used until dusk or so, I mean, we're only open until eight in the summer, nine in the off-season, so it will be used potentially, but primarily during the day with the day camp.
Okay, and the light, the Y sign will not be lit?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there landscaping, which is what's shown on this picture?
No, we didn't have any landscaping.
They asked for a weaver.
Oh, there's a weaver. But it's going to be sort of similar to the picture?
Yes.
How many kids do you plan on having in here during the day? Versus what, or do you guys use the building now, or is it?
No, not for, we use it for an office and a nurses' station.
Okay.
They'll be probably rotating in and out 50 to 60 kids.
Okay.
We're broken into sessions, periods, you know, like school, so various groups go in and out.
Okay, where, where do the kids go now?
On, on sunny days, they're outside.
What about inclement days?
They go into the Y, which causes some congestion in the Y with other members, but this would be utilized even not in rainy days, we could do some more programming, different types of activities during the summer as well.
Okay.
Just will enhance the overall quality of the camp and provide rainy day space that less impact on the membership.
Any other questions from the commission?
Never one to gild the lily, I think I'll just sort of wrap it up. I think it's a great project, it finishes the renovation. For those of you who come to the Y and drive down there and look at a concrete block garage, you know, that's all you think it would be if you look at it, but, I mean, it does have a purpose, but it, it, it needs to be refreshed, and make it better for, for the kids and everything. So with that, we would ask you to approve the site plan. I know there's some conditions, we definitely would need to get, you know, eventual sign-off on the building plans from the zoning officer and the building official, as Doug alluded to, you know, all, all those construction documents will be done once we know we have approval, because, and we wouldn't be able to go forward, and I think there's any proposed conditions of approval along that line is appropriate.
Yeah, so as John mentioned at the beginning, the applicant did provide revised plans, but in time of writing the report and getting everything out, I didn't receive confirmation that those were sufficient. I did from the town engineer and the zoning enforcement officer. I haven't heard from the building official or Connecticut Deep, but if all but the, if the first two recommended stipulations are removed, and stipulations three through six are approved, then that would be sufficient to address those outstanding comments. Really, it's just getting confirmation that the design is compliant by those two bodies, but other than that, everything else has been addressed.
Okay. All right. No other questions for the applicant? That's the commission's pleasure on this motion, on this application. Just Clifton, which stipulations then, all five?
Yeah, so I would remove numbers one and two, and stipulate three through six.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application number PZ 2423 SPA and CAM Ocean Community YMCA, subject to the following, following stipulations. Number one, any proposed alterations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Connecticut Deep shall be subject to review and approval by the town engineer, town planner, and commission as necessary. Number two, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. And number three, final plans shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records.
Is there one more? There's one more?
I'm sorry, I flipped that over, it's a long one. The applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of the zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or revocable letter of credit meeting the requirements of ZR 15 dot four dot three. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Work shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Motion has been made by Gary with the four stipulations. Is there a second?
Is there a second motion?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded. All right. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I think this is a great project and I think the low-profile building is very appropriate. I'm very happy that they have, within the design, kept the windows and the sign away from the water side for light pollution issues, which the main building definitely suffers from. So I think this is a great design and the way it's orientated is very good.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other comments or discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion approving the application with the following, with the four stipulations?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any extension? Motion carries and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the old business. Do we have to vote on two or do we need one motion sufficient? You did the SBA again.
You voted as a group, so it's for both.
Oh, it's for both, okay. So we have voted on this one, yeah. Okay.
We already have a camera. The legislature's supposed to fix that, so you have to.
All right. Next item on the old business agenda, PZ 242A CAM for Gary and Christie Chadwell. That has been requested to be postponed to the next meeting, which will be November 4th. So then we will go into the public hearings. So for the first public hearing, PZ 2424, SUPG Development LLC. I think, had we already opened this?
I don't know.
Clifton, I can't remember.
Didn't we open it last time?
Nope.
No, we did not.
No.
Oh, we just tabled it.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So we will need to open the meeting and then immediately continue.
Correct.
The meeting, continue the public hearing for this.
Not just provide a background on this. So this was originally supposed to be opened at the previous meeting.
Right.
Due to the denial of the regulation amendment, the applicant requested to table.
Okay.
So they could provide a revised special use permit application. The applicant couldn't be here today and the attorney for the applicant couldn't be here today and also requested additional time to develop the special use permit update. Unfortunately, they are up against a clock though, and so the public hearing does have to be opened today. But since they're not present to provide a, you know, presentation to everybody, the attorney requested that it was opened and immediately continued, so that's what we're requesting.
All right. So do we need to read the full opening or just open the?
You can just open it.
Okay. All right.
Motion to open and all that.
Okay. Gary?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open public hearing, PZ 2424, SUPG Development LLC.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Motion's been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second made. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Hearing has been opened. Now, Gary, I think we need a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue meeting number PZ 2424, SUPG Development LLC.
Okay. Thank you. Motion's been made to continue this hearing, public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So that is continued. And that'll be continued to our next scheduled meeting. Is that how that will work?
Correct. Without other information, but corrective. Currently it would be the fourth. If I get updated time, that it's a different date, I'll move the commission.
Okay. Thank you. Clifton? All right. And then the next item on the agenda, PZ 2427, SUP for Pinewood Landscaping, that has been requested to be postponed to the November 19th meeting?
Correct. So that doesn't have to be opened.
Okay. So we're not opening that?
It'll be opened on the 19th.
Okay.
And we'll send out updated notices to the figure for that.
Okay. Thank you, Clifton. Then the final one for public hearings for this evening. This is for PZ 2429, SUP AG Trust LLC. This is one we do have to open, so I don't know, Lynn, if you have the yellow sheet to read. And just to let folks know how this will proceed, once the public hearing is opened, the applicant will have their presentation. The commission will ask questions. Then we will also allow public comments for, against, or just general comments. After that, the applicant will then have an opportunity to rebut any comments. And if there's no further discussion on that, we'll close the hearing and the commission will then decide how to proceed. Lynn?
So I believe all we have to do is open the public hearing for PZ 2429, SUP AG Trust LLC, special use permit application and coastal area management review for the modification of previously approved special use permit, PZ 1930, SUP, to include outpatient surgical care. The property is located at 40 Mason's Island Road, Mystic. MBL 160 dash four dash four property is located in an M dash one zone.
Okay. Lynn? Is there a second on the motion to open the public hearing?
I second the motion.
Thank you. All right. Motion's been made and seconded, open the public hearing for this. All those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstention? Motion carries. So the public hearing is now opened. So whoever is here for this application, you're welcome to speak.
Good evening again. For the applicant, Sergio Transio, Transio and Associates, offices at 99 Mechanic Street. This application before you this evening is for basically an interior renovation or fit-out of a previously approved structure. The site plan is not changing. I want to make that just very clear. Everything is taking place inside the building. From outside, none of the exteriors are changing. None of the site is changing. None of landscaping, anything with respect to the site. All of it is interior. The original approval was for a, was permitted under a medical clinic. And currently, the third floor is, has been fit out and is operating cure med spa. That business is now expanding to the second and first floors, which were just a blank slate pretty much. Hadn't been fit out with anything. They've just been vacant. So the second and third floors of the building, which have been vacant, the med spa is going to be expanding into a day spa on the second floor. And on the first floor, we'll have surgical care and a training facility associated with it. I believe the building plans were in your package. I can go through those. With me here this evening is Candice Trojadas. She's the owner and the applicant and operator of the medical spa. If there's any specific questions with regards to what they do there, I'm not the person to ask, but she can definitely let you know. You also recall, we were here not long ago for a text amendment that was able to make this able to, this site to support the surgical center on the first floor, the surgical care on an outpatient basis. So because the square footage, the gross floor area dedication to the med spa, prior to the original special use permit, had medical clinic and it had medical offices. Now it's being converted technically to completely that medical clinic use with the expansion of the spa and the surgical center. So as such, the two things that we needed to make sure that we could accommodate was the revised parking calculation, which we have. We have adequate parking on the site. I believe the zoning and planning department has reviewed that. I believe we have sufficient parking to support the uses that will be fit out. And also we had to make sure that the septic system could accommodate the change. With respect to the septic system, the Public Health Code doesn't have a specific design criteria for medical clinics or med spas in particular. So when we applied for the original, for the original permit for the septic system, we utilized water records from a similar facility. When we went to Ledge Light, because this represents technically an increase in the medical clinic usage and will result in a larger gallons per day design flow, they requested that we evaluate the water records for this facility, which has been inoperational for over a year. So we obtained those records from Aquarian Water Company. We ran the calculations, sent that off to Ledge Light. They consulted with Department of Health and they came back and said, we are, we will accept a certain rate. It's a .34 gallons per day per square foot of building. And that actually, when you apply it to the use, because they recommended we identify the entire building as the med spa, even though they'll be surgical, it'll be different ancillary uses with the training and the surgical center. Apply that rate and it did result in an increase in the septic system as far as the design flow goes. In Connecticut, you're allowed up to 50% of your flow of your original system that can be approved administratively through their, through the sanitarium as long as you show that you have a code-compliant system that meets that design flow. Up to that 50%, they can approve it. I think we're well below that. And I think we've conservatively estimated what the water is being used at the facility. I can honestly say, after looking at the water records, there's not a lot, not a ton of water that's used for the type of procedures that they're doing here. And so realistically, the most water that's used is, I think, is to water the landscaping, which we did deduct from the, from the calculation. As such, we have applied to Ledge Light Health District. They have not rendered an approval yet. As late as this afternoon, I was in contact with the sanitarium. She was off on Monday and she hadn't had a chance to review our revised plans. But what I can testify to this evening is that we did everything that they recommended as far as the calculation goes. And even into saying how much more leaching area that we needed to show on the plan. And I can show you that on this plan here. This is the plan that we submitted to Ledge Light. This is the leaching field here. There are three rows that were installed as part of the approved design. We have, and this is the area where we show a code-compliant area. This area doesn't have to be installed. It's kind of a reserve or insurance policy that in case there are issues with the septic system, you can show that you have the space to become code-compliant for the additional use. I don't anticipate any issues with that approval. If you so choose to stipulate it this evening, we'd be happy to do so. We can't move forward without Ledge Light and Department of Health approval, regardless if you approve this evening. One of the other things that they asked us to do as before the Ledge Light would issue an approval is to contact Department of Health because there are some, there's a plunge pool proposed, I believe, on the second floor. This is the first floor. You can see over here, on the architectural plans, this is the plunge pool. It's actually penetrates down lower into the first floor. But there is an interior pool for different spa treatments. So there's a heated and I think a cold plunge as well in this area. That's where that pool is. We do have to get that permitted and licensed through the Department of Health and we're in the middle of that process. They haven't gotten back to us yet, but we fully anticipate, once again, can't move forward without their approval on that. Speaking of which, this is the second floor. Similar amenities to the third floor. Some steam rooms, some therapy rooms, different type of therapies and procedures that can take place typical of the day spa on the second floor. And on the first floor, as you come in the front of the building, this side will be dedicated to the surgical center where different types of surgery, surgical procedures will take place. And then the remaining side is some flexible training, training space that they'll have. So basically, it's basically a fit-out to expand the existing use that's already there with the addition of the surgical, which was added to the, to the use of a medical clinic. Once again, as late as this afternoon, the town engineer had some, since he was, I believe, away, there was a peer reviewing engineer. He, we responded to those comments to Mr. Greenlaw and he concurred with our findings of the response that there wasn't any, I believe they surrounded stormwater management, but we have identified on the plan that the stormwater management hasn't changed. Just for your indication, this board or this commission approved this site plan, which had an underground infiltration system that was found to be adequate when the original building was constructed. So I don't believe there was any other commentary with the exception, I think, of Ledge Light. And once again, we've adequately, I believe, addressed the need for parking with this change of use, this slight change of use for this building. So with that, I don't know if I missed anything or if Clifton has anything to add. I might be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, Mr. Jadas is here. If you have any specific questions on the operational, the interior space.
So just, I have a question. Just, there's not gonna be any change to the exterior of the building at all? No lighting changes, nothing? No changes to the parking layout as it currently is? You believe that's going to be sufficient for? I guess my question would be, do we, do they expect more folks to be coming here with that due to the surgical, you know, outpatient there?
I'm assuming that, yes, there'll be more patients. But there's only so many patients you can serve, obviously, in one day. I'm assuming surgeries take probably a majority of that. I'm not sure if you're doing multiple a day. Mr. Jadas may know. But I believe any procedure, if you go to a medical spa or a day spa, is gonna be probably an hour or two and there's only so many rooms. But because you're expanding to the second and third floors, or the first and second floors, yes, there's gonna be a volume increase, but the parking we've, by calculation, should support it.
Okay.
What type of surgery is going to be taking place?
I believe it's.
Oh, elective.
Elective, plastic surgery.
Plastic surgery?
Yeah. Elective surgery, yeah.
So how about for biohazards? Is there anything that you had to do to take that into account based on the type of surgeries you're going to be doing?
My assumption, I don't know, that's out of my area of expertise, but my assumption is that they're gonna be licensed appropriately and any biohazards are gonna have to be removed from the site as, you know, medical waste.
So my only question is, it has to do with the surgeries and, you know, I mean, plastic surgery. Medical emergencies, so, you know, you're sharing that drive, that Kerry Austin drive. When there's camp, which we just heard, there's cars going in and out, left and right. The type of surgeries you're doing, are there possibilities of medical emergencies where you would need to have ambulances come in or anything like that?
Typically, these are elective for healthy people that are choosing to do, you know, elective procedures to enhance themselves or, you know, nothing that's gonna, not like an open-heart surgery or brain surgery or anything on, you know, that's gonna cause a rush to the hospital.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We spent a lot of time with the design of this building and the retaining walls and everything. It's really well done, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
How is the existing parking situation there? Just adequate, you know, for what's there now?
We have plenty right now.
Plenty right now, so.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything else you want to present?
No. We would very much appreciate if you can render an approval this evening with the appropriate stipulations, with final plan reviewed by staff. We do reckon, you know. We do, you know, once again, we recognize we have to get other approvals subsequent to this and in conjunction with. So we wouldn't be getting to any construction until those were rendered.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a sign in sheet for this? Is there anybody?
Nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up? Okay. I'll, at this point, offer to the public that's here, anybody who wishes to comment on this application or against, general commentary? Anyone? Okay. No commentary, so no need for rebuttal. So I think the next item would be to close the hearing, public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of closing this public hearing?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. All right. Next, I think, any discussion or are we ready for a motion on this application? And I think it looks like there should be three recommended stipulations.
Those are sufficient because the first one still covers Ledge Light.
Okay.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to submit application number PZ 2429, SUP AG Trust LLC, subject to the following three stipulations.
And if I could hold you there just for a sec, Gary, just to make sure. So there were three actions required on this? Are we able to do them all as one component? Okay. So this motion will be for the waivers requested, coastal area management application and special use permit. Okay. Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you.
The three following stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall address, "outstanding commas," to the satisfaction of the Ledge Light Health District and Town Engineer as applicable. Number two, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And number three, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plans shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Motion has been made by Gary to approve with the three stipulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next items on the agenda, are there any ones for new submittals that we need to discuss?
Just one item. As of this morning, PZ 2430, SPA has been withdrawn, so that will not be on a future meeting.
Okay.
Withdrawn.
Okay. And any concerns with the other two? Anything we need to discuss?
Well, it didn't highlight anything that would require there to need a special public hearing or anything, so.
Okay. Great. All right. With that, we are at the end of the agenda. Gary, I think there's one final. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something?
Motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, Lynn. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second motion.
All right. Motion's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Meeting is closed.